So I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, July 17th, 2017. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have board members Tim Paulus, Crystal Baraki, Peter Tensing, Paula Cole, and I'm Christine Malik. John Ashmead was not able to make it this evening, and we also have Superintendent Unowski with us. I would like to remind everyone of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." We will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. We will start with review and approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Cole, a second by Mr. Tensing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Oh, sorry. Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. We'll start with information and proposals on non-action items. We'll start with reports and information from non-school sources and public comment. So Board Policy 203 states that individuals wishing to address the Board directly during a meeting make a written request prior to the meeting. The Board chair has discretion to determine if or when public comments will be placed on the agenda, and we have one such request this evening. Richfield Public Schools Board Policy 208, Section 9(c), Closed Meeting and Preliminary Consideration of Charges states that the Board shall close a meeting to discuss any preliminary allegations about an employee. Also Minnesota Statute 13.08 subdivision 1, the school district is liable for damages, costs, and attorney fees in the event of willful violation and punitive damages for violation of state data privacy laws. And also Minnesota Statute 13.09, a person who willfully violates data privacy or whose conduct constitutes the knowing unauthorized acquisition of not-public data is guilty of a misdemeanor. As a reminder, these are statements to the Board as a whole, so there is not discussion with individual Board members. And each speaker, although we only have one this evening, has three minutes to speak, and after that, their statement is done. So Shar Blanche?
Do you want me to go over there so it's recorded?
Yeah, you want to speak into the microphone so that they can hear it.
Is it working? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to address you guys tonight. I've spoken with many of you on an individual basis about concerns that I have as a parent of a child of color in this school. I'm concerned about what I've heard from staff members, who are educators of my son, about the treatment that they have received from administration. I have spoken with many of you individually. I have concerns, and I am requesting that the Board conduct an independent investigation into the actions of administration. I believe that for this district to be truly fair and equitable, we need to have teachers who are able to do their jobs without fear. That is not the case right now. I hope that you will consider my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will move on to reports and information from school sources and the superintendent update.
All right. So we're pleased tonight to welcome Steve DeVich, City Manager. We've had a conversation about two TIF districts. Mr. Patterson, can you assist Tim with our presentation? So Mr. DeVich is here tonight to talk about and make a request to extend two TIF districts within the city of Richfield. These have the opportunity and potential to benefit our school district. Sharing some of this information, this information is in the Board packet, but without further ado, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. DeVich.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. And Madam Chair, members of the School Board, again, thanks for the opportunity for me to be here. I'm going to be very brief. It's what I typically do, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions or go over anything more specifically that you want to go over. There are two items before you to take a look at, something that we have worked on very hard these last few years, and we're lucky enough to get through the legislative session this year. We have two tax increment districts in Richfield that just haven't been moving along at the pace that they need to move along. And in the case of one of them, and that would be the Lake Sett Lindale District, and that is the area that comprises what used to be the old Lindale Garden Center. There's now Lakewins Co-op there and a lot of open land, as well as a new little amphitheater. But that district needed help in that while the district is not being extended, what is happening is there's a part of the TIF law that allows a five-year knockdown, it's called. And in that five-year knockdown, things that have to happen to get an area ready for development, whether that be cleanup, or in the case of that particular site, there was a lot of broken glass that was mixed in with the soil that had to be remedied, and other things, again, to make it ready to develop. And it can also be used for things like underground parking structure, and that is going to have to happen to put any kind of number of units there because there just isn't enough space otherwise. And so what happens in that particular district is the five-year knockdown has about 16 to 18 months left on it right now. I was able to get two more years on that knockdown. It still stays within the length of the district. It just allows those expenses to be part of the knockdown expense and part of the overall TIF. That eventually, we hope, is going to lead to about 120-something, 130 units, I believe, in there. In fact, I could be more accurate by just looking at the...
120-plus.
120-plus, yeah. And that's what I, you know, it's going to end up being around there. And that's something great for the city, and I think would be for the school as well, along with a restaurant that we see going in there and the completion of that site. The other TIF district is the one on Cedar Avenue, and Cedar Avenue has been a trick to redevelop. When we first got that district, I was over at the Legislature, and we were able to get that area to qualify as a TIF district because of the impact of the airport noise. It was not a blight-created district. And so because of the construction of the new runway and the impact on the homes in there, we got the TIF district. We got some extra federal money to help us as well. And so what happened is some of those homes got taken out, and for those who know East Richfield, there was a lot of vacant land sitting over there for a long time. But then the economy turned bad, and as the TIF district kept ticking away, the economy soured, and we were not able to get development going over there. Well, now, over 10 years of the TIF district were gone, and that makes it even more difficult to get development in there. So we were able to go back to the Legislature and get them to reinstate, I think we might have lost more like 11 or 12 years, but we got 10 of the years back, which, again, I think is going to be the synergy to getting the projects that we hope to get developed over there. And in that area, on the area north of 66th Street, we're looking at about 158, 160, something like that, units that we think will be there, and that would be kind of right across from Target in that general area. And then south of 66th Street, we're looking at the Chamberlain Complex, which we hope will be something like 230-plus units. So right now, what we're looking at, again, is a lot of vacant land that used to have homes on it. So the base of the TIF districts isn't even what it was when the districts were created. And the base is where both the school district and the city are getting current taxes from. So to the extent that it inflates it back up again, it inflates the base back to where it was, that's going to be of immediate benefit. But the longer range, of course, is getting that area developed, and there's the greatest potential there to put housing units again and get that area to really start developing and then further down. So overall, the two districts, I think, are a great addition for this community, for the city, and for the school. And we'll put about 500 or so housing units into this community, which we could certainly use. And I'd stand for any questions or any comments that anyone might have.
Just as a quick update to the other Board members. Board Chair Malik and I met with Mr. DeVich and sort of walked through the proposal, just to make sure that we understood prior to bringing this forward as a recommendation today. We also worked with our partners from Ellers to look at what would be the tax impact. And there is a relatively low tax impact with a possible loss, long-term, over the extended time of $26,000 in property taxes. But that would be if things weren't extended and things were not built. And so what we're really looking at is what I would consider to be a very small possible financial impact within Richfield Public Schools, with the opportunity to bring in a wide range of housing opportunities for our Richfield citizens. And as a city, we are working hard with our City Manager and our city team to expand options for citizens within Richfield and to expand housing options. And so for me, I'm excited by this opportunity to see more homes being put in Richfield.
So that actually connects to, I know we have a joint study session next month on Tuesday, August 8th, with the city. And one of the things that I would love to talk about, then, are some of the more detailed plans for housing in these two developments in particular, just to get a sense of the range of housing options. Obviously, one of the things that we have talked about as a School Board is the need to make sure that we're maintaining affordable housing options in our community. So I think to be able to talk about that with you all next month would be really wonderful.
Yes. And just to add to that, we've really carefully considered that, and I think when we get a chance to talk about it in more specifics, you'll be very, I think you'll be pleased at what's going to happen there.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
It says within the packet that in order for the legislation to be effective, both the city, the county, and the school district all have to approve it. Has the county, has the city passed this?
Yes. The city has, the county's passing it yet this month. So by the end of July, all the jurisdictions will have passed it. And then each jurisdiction has to sign up on a certification, which should go back to the city of Richfield, because we would package all of that together and then make a complete submission to the Secretary of State's office to be able to move this along.
Is there anything within this, just to, it's in the theoretical, that this extension of time still could be inadequate, and that there's some future date that we'd have to, or are there developers on hand, ready to do this, if they can get the two and 10 years reinstated?
That's a great question. Let me put it to you this way. We are absolutely committed to getting it done. I don't think there's a chance in the world that I could ever go, or anyone else could ever go back to the Legislature and get us an extension on any one of these TIF districts again. And so this is a one, this is a one-and-done. We'll never be able to go back and get an extension again.
From a, I don't know if this would be a zoning issue or anything else, I mean, you've certainly shared with us the plans to get housing, multiple, presumably multifamily housing, developed into those areas. Is there any possibility down the road that plans could change, or zoning could change in such a way that those are developed in a different fashion than with housing?
Well, certainly, I mean, anything is possible. I can't, I couldn't stand here and say that something in the future wouldn't change, although I would find it highly, highly, highly unlikely. For instance, at Lake Sett Lindale, as soon as this gets approved, I think we're moving forward, and I've got a pretty good assurance that there's interest to put in something like 15 or 18 really nice townhomes. And then the more, you know, the more difficult one to put in will be the 90-some unit, either apartment or condo, but I'm very confident that'll happen as well. A restaurant, I think that will be moving along pretty readily as well. In the Cedar Avenue District, I think everyone is committed, you know, south of 66th Street to the Chamberlain Apartment Complex. We have done a lot of work with that. There's been a lot of vetting in the neighborhood and with the public, and I just see that moving forward really quite soon. The trickier part is on the north part, where we've had that vacant land for a long time. And we have worked with a couple of different developers, that it did not pan out. That won't change, because the entire plan with the Cedar Avenue corridor, with the buffering of the airport, was to be able to do a couple of things. One, to put commercial in as the first line of defense, so to speak, against the noise that comes off the airport. And then next would be to put more multifamily housing that had, you know, a little bit more mass, obviously, than single-family homes, to again serve as a buffer, so that ultimately, when you go west of 16th Avenue, the homes are more protected against the, you know, the noise that's coming off the airport. That was the idea, and I don't see that changing.
Thanks.
I mean, I'll be honest, this is so far outside our usual range of consideration, right? Housing redevelopment is not something we, not something we spend really any of our time taking action on, because it's just not, it's not in our wheelhouse. It's not, it almost never comes up, right? Our role in it is to, housing stock, or, you know, we have very little influence on that. That's all done at the city level.
Right. This echoes some of the conversation Christine and I had with City Manager DeVich, just talking about this as a possible catalyst, making sure that the house has happened with a little, with a pretty small impact. And I think we talked about how this is one of the few times when our voice actually matters to that point, where it makes sense, if it has an impact.
Yeah, okay. I mean, yeah, it's just, the city has already passed that again? The city has already approved this?
Yes.
Yeah, and Steve, just for my clarification, I think you, so you mentioned that that tax impact of, that potential tax impact of $26,000 of a loss would be essentially if no redevelopment happened, if it was a total bust, is that right?
No, that's just from the extension of the couple of years. Right now, there is no redevelopment. We receive very, very small amounts, and it currently is a TIF district. And so this is just sort of those end couple of years.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah.
I believe.
Yeah.
And the big positive impact, from my perspective, is housing those 500, or 500 units, which would be very significant, both our district and to our city.
If I would add one more thing, I mean, if you think about it in the most positive realm, that when these districts are fully developed and they come off the tax rolls, there's going to be a whole lot more value that's going to come to all of us, to the school, to the city, to the county, from these districts than ever would be if this doesn't happen. You know, that area north of 66th Street, without this TIF district, I just, I don't know how we'd ever make it happen, and that would be a travesty.
So I just wanted to share with Board members, this will come up during new business. Mr. DeVich has multiple meetings this evening. He is here to answer any questions. So if there are questions you will have when we get to new business items D and E, because these will be resolutions for the Board, in the gardens and Cedar Avenue, please make sure to ask for clarification from Mr. DeVich now, because I'll do the best I can to answer, but he has all of the direct information.
Thank you for coming in today.
Well, thank you for having me, and thank you for the support of what we're doing here. We're both on the same team. We're going to make, we're going to take Richfield to another level, and this is part of what's going to make it happen. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. DeVich. All right. So good timing with our conversation coming later in regard to bond referendum, but we are going to be talking about long-term facility maintenance, health and safety, and some of the needs that we have. Mr. Holgi, are you supporting this presentation this evening, sir?
Yeah, I'll just do a quick introduction. Jake Baxter is one of our representatives from IEA, which is our health and safety consultants. Their agency works across the district, looking at the health and safety across, for compliance with different regulations, as well as just our general quality of environment within the schools. And so he's going to provide a brief update regarding his work. There is also a policy on the Health and Safety Plan, which is the Board policy, that does require annual review, that is in the consent agenda tonight, that's just supported. We are not recommending any changes to that at this time, but just need the Board's affirmation of that on an annual basis. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jake.
Thank you to the Board, and thanks, Craig, for introducing me. Thanks for allowing me to come and represent IEA. Again, my name's Jake Baxter, not Jake from State Farm, Jake from IEA. Quick joke. I do wear khakis, but anyways, so we'll just go real quick and just talk about some of the things that we've done, just some tasks that we've done in this fiscal year of '17. We had a mock OSHA inspection, where Metro Exu comes in and just walks through a building, or two or three, just to help prepare us for if OSHA ever does come on-site. So just some core compliance, things that we've done to help the district, be in compliance with OSHA regulations, MDE regulations, MDH, and stuff like that. We have chemical hygiene inspections, where we go through science rooms at the high school and the middle school, and do science safety checklists. We do fume hood inspections, just to make sure everything's going how it's supposed to go. And we make sure all the emergency eye wash and showers are up to par, just in case something does happen. We have AHRA inspections, where we come in every six months and every three years, just to make sure all the, any identified asbestos is intact, in good condition, and not a danger to anybody. If it is, then we take care of it, following the proper procedures. We do compressed gas inspections, lockout-takeout, where we just make sure our custodians are properly locking out equipment if they're going to be working on it, so the equipment doesn't start up accidentally. And we come in and do annual custodial training with our custodians as well. We do audiograms and pulmonary function tests, where we contract MedCompass to come out and just test our, the guy's hearings, and make sure that their lung function is still up to par. We also have a hearing conservation program that goes along with that, where we provide hearing protection. And with the pulmonary function test, some of our maintenance workers wear respirators, so we just want to make sure everything is okay with that. Go ahead. So with that, Hennepin County came in a few months ago, just to do a quick inspection. Went very well. The rep from Hennepin County was very pleased, very impressed. They came and looked through the Richfield High School loading dock, which is where we accumulate a lot of the hazardous waste, and also went to the bus garage. The loading dock was very clean and organized and really amazing, so that was a really good thing to see. What came from that is we got our 2017 hazardous waste generator license. Indoor air quality, just as a preventative measure and to make sure we know what's going on with our ventilation systems, IEA goes through each building and each classroom and tests carbon dioxide levels, CO, carbon monoxide, total volatile organic compounds and stuff like that, just to make sure the air is okay for our students and our staff. We also send out an IAQ survey that goes to all staff with email capability, and they can fill that out. If they have any concerns or questions, they can mark that on the form, and then that gets read by the Director of Facilities and IEA, and we can pursue those as they come up. And all of our IAQ testing is following this EPA IAQ Tools for Schools format. So just some quick results. There were some elevated carbon dioxide levels in stained ceiling tiles in various classrooms throughout the district. Stained ceiling tiles indicate potential moisture problems. There might have been a leak at one point in time. And it's just an opportunity for a fungus to grow, bacteria to grow. So we just, whenever we see those, we put those on a report and recommend those get changed out, so that there's no fungus or anything growing on those. Elevated carbon dioxide levels indicate that the ventilation might not be adequate for the number of people in the room. There is research that indicates that high CO2 levels are directly related to decreased performance. So we get that on our report, and Director of Facilities and the maintenance staff can go through and identify if the ventilation system isn't working properly, if we need to upgrade, et cetera. Historically, the district has had an issue with pets, so we've been developing some procedures, testing them at the high school with a new contractor. Those have been working really well, so we've officially switched over to Ecolab, and they've been already seeing success in other buildings in the district. Cooling towers, recently, over the past year or so, there has been concern over Legionella, and it was found that there is a problem with a cooling tower in Hopkins. In response to that, MDH, they tried to develop and push through legislation that would require all sites to register their cooling towers and to develop a sanitization plan. That ended up not going through, but just as a preventative measure, Richfield is doing that anyways. They've developed a plan to keep our cooling tower sanitized and clean, and so Advantaclean has already come out and done that, and everything is looking good with that. And we'll continue that going forward. Safety Committee, they've been getting more and more active this year. For the next year, they're setting goals, looking to try and get improved communication, more efficient communication from the committee members to staff. Committee will review next year a summary of all the injuries that have occurred for staff over this past year, just to see if we can identify any trends, slips and falls, what have you. You can also find those meeting minutes on the district website. Other tasks that we've accomplished, this GMAX testing, where we go and do an impact test on the fields, the football fields and soccer fields, to make sure that they're at the correct values, so our kids aren't getting concussions or injured in that way. We've done abatement of some asbestos flooring in the district. We've also created new emergency maps. I'll send these around, just so that you guys can see. This is just an example of emergency maps that we've created for the high school. It's just for the second floor. So the purpose of these emergency maps is just so everyone can easily read it and see where they're supposed to go in the event of an emergency. For example, this conference room is on this map, and it says if there's an emergency, obviously, it would go out that door and out that exit, or that one right there as well.
I'm going with this one.
You can go with that one. That works. We've also done some ergonomics training for our custodial staff, just to making sure that they're lifting properly and stuff like that. We want to make sure that they come to work and go home safely. So we don't have to do this, since I passed that around. I was just going to bring up a PDF. As I talked about earlier, we have these mock OSHA inspections, so you can flip, those are just a couple of pictures. We went to Central Community Ed Center and just walked around with the head custodian there, found some power strips that OSHA would cite, or a fire inspector would cite, unprotected light bulb, floor hole that has now been fixed, fall protection on top of a boiler, which is on track as a project for this next year. Just some various things. This is really not that much. I know it fills up the slide, but it's not that many things. Just a couple of problems with the emergency eye wash station in the boiler room at the middle school, so we've taken steps to mitigate that hazard. We also went to Sheridan Hills. The only thing that the mock OSHA inspector found at Sheridan Hills was a garbage disposal that needed guarding in the kitchen. Just some fiscal year '18 projects that we plan on taking care of. We're going to continue with the IAQ walkthroughs. The district has seen a lot of benefit with that, so we're going to continue that going forward. Fall protection projects throughout the district, powered industrial truck training for our custodians, and area lift training for them as well, and continue working with ICS to plan future projects. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, that is all I have. Thank you.
So I have a question about the mock OSHA inspection.
Sure.
So do we track, then, you know, the things that you found? Do we look back at the last time we did a mock OSHA inspection and see?
See if they're repeat.
Because some of that stuff is vaguely familiar, and I'm a lab person, so I know about the eye washes, and I'm just curious if we, if we're tracking that.
We do track that, and sometimes it does, other things come up and they don't get taken care of. We have a priority list to get the high priority items. Like, there was an eye wash station at the high school that hasn't been working for the past couple of years, and now we've gotten that one fixed this year. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And there are no commendations in this meeting, so...
There are not.
There are not. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any discussion of the consent agenda, or is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Please second.
We have a motion by Ms. Paulus, a second by Ms. Cole. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is approved. So we will move on to old business and the operating levy, referendum, and special election.
All right. So I'm going to present individually, but both of these together, as a conversation. We've had ongoing conversation about both operating levy and calling a special election, and then also having a bond referendum and calling a special election. As we've developed, we've had conversation around our operational funds, which are significantly lower than many of our neighboring districts. Right now, we have a fund balance of 4.4%, which actually doesn't really ensure the long-term stability of our schools, from a fiscal perspective. We are very proud of the fact that over the last three years, it's raised from 2.5% up to 4.4. So we've been very deliberate with our fund balance, and we've been very deliberate in trying to raise that. But many of our surrounding districts have between 8 and 12%, and so that is one of the challenges that we have ongoing. Ongoing because over the past few years, we've already reduced $4.2 million from our district, and we're about $600... And we're about $600 less and fewer dollars per student than if funding just since 2003 had increased at the rate of inflation. Right now, we're receiving between $400 and $700 fewer than any of our surrounding districts. And also, if you note, within the legislature, metro public school districts are actually receiving a smaller increase. So while the advertised increase is two and two on the formula, we're actually more like 1.7 and 3.4 overall. And so some of the impact isn't quite happening to our district the way we would hope that would. Couple other areas we've been advocating for is in regard to special education cross subsidy and ELL learner education. And the district, we're one of the higher ELL student populations within the metro area. We were disappointed to see that there was no additional funding placed into special education or into ELL. And so as we look to an increase in operating referendum funds and as I ask you to authorize the creation of a ballot, we've been looking in the $400 range to $500 range. When we did our survey, which was presented on at the board last month, we actually asked for $500 with our community. We actually had 59% support with almost 20% gap between those who would be supporting at that number and those who would be voting against. With board input, we've had a lot of conversation around making sure that any requests we made from both a bond perspective and from an operational perspective stays at or below $25 per month. So this becomes kind of a moving target because how the impact on a home is connected to both current pricing within the housing market, because there are fluctuations within the market. There are also fluctuations in regard to the impact of a home having to do with the number of students that we have. And so as you will remember, our budget from back in the spring, we have a small reduction of students and so it also changes the amount of impact because we have fewer students to fund. So at the time of putting this together, we were looking at approximately 400 per pupil to sort of close that gap. I'll be asking the board tonight to allow me to work with our attorney to craft an operating referendum question somewhere in the 400 to 450 range and trying to make sure that our both operational request and bond referendum request remains at $25 or lower in terms of impact on a $200,000 house within Richfield. So are there questions about that before I give some background on bond referendum?
I just want to point out, we, we list within the background information that the, you know, part of, part of the impetus for this is that the state funding hasn't kept up with inflation year after year. And, and I guess as, as we plan and communicate what we, what we wish to do with this extra funding should the public give it to us, if, if we vote for, if we vote to prepare the ballot and the, and the public supports it. If we're going to have a plan to sort of do underspend in the earlier part of the 10-year period so that we have it on hand, you know, whatever, wherever the board is in the future would, would need to, I would like to think would have that discipline, otherwise you're just spending your inflation guard.
Right, I think one of the things the board has been very clear on is in regard to conservative with taxpayer funds, also making sure that we do plan long-term. You all have been very clear from a visionary perspective that we need to have a stronger safety net and ensure the fiscal stability and the fiscal long-term health of our organization. And so it was very, made very clear to me as Superintendent of the District that two and a half as a fund balance wasn't acceptable to the board and we needed to work despite some challenges within funding to try to raise that in a way that was supportive of the programs that supported our students, but also in a way that ensured the long-term fiscal stability. One of the ways we would use some of these funds would be to ensure that we did have funds long-term by slowly increasing and slowly continuing to increase that fund balance to make sure that we did have some coverage long-term. It is important to note that we would be rescinding the inflationary increase that we talked about two years ago and so that would be something that the board has been very cautious about, so that we would.
Would be, would be rescinding it or not including it on this?
We would be not including it within this, within this request. Correct.
I just think also being clear, and I was surprised that it wasn't, at least I may have missed it, sorry, in the background information, is that this would replace, obviously not just the inflation part of that last operating request, but the operating levy overall that we currently have, so that we're.
No, I believe this is a separate ask entirely. All the, all the exists, is that, is that a fair assessment? This is a, this would be yet another?
I thought this was going to replace, and so if this passed, it would replace the existing operating levy with this amount?
It would replace the existing, we have two operating levies, one that is, one that the local optional revenue replaces or kind of backfills. This would be rescinding that and replacing it with a new dollar amount. So we're rescinding about $950 and replacing that with whatever the additional amount is along with that.
And have, have the folks at FPAC talked about the, the potential risk of that?
When we discussed the fact that we only have one that's out there, they were more comfortable with moving forward with that process is how I understood their commentary.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, so it's, it's just not clear as, as it's written up within the packet to me that, that this is the rescind and replace option. I thought it was a separate, yet another one on the pile. So it is, so what you would be asking then is, is, is the recommendation is that this is a rescind the existing two operating questions, replace them with that combined amount plus this four to 450?
No.
Were we rescinding one of the operating questions?
One of them.
Not both.
Yes, the 900, not the 400. Go ahead, Gary.
So the, and Gary can jump in here too, but basically the $424 operating referendum that was passed in 2012 or 2013, when local optional revenue came into play, required that we reduce the operating referendums by that amount for any referendums that were repealed by that. So that one is, no action being taken on that one, that one is continuing to exist and theoretically, if all legislation stays in place, that amount would be able to continue as local optional revenue at that point that that referendum expires. The $950, the most recent one that was passed that has the inflationary increase attached to it, is what we are requesting be revoked or rescinded and replaced with a new amount.
With that amount plus four to 450?
With, with whatever the current dollar is proposed for next year with the additional 400 or 450 dollars per student.
The other thing, I just want to point out that it's one question, revoke and replace. So they can't revoke it without replacing it. If they don't, if it didn't pass, you keep the 950 that you have, you can't lose the one and not get, not get the other.
I'm guessing this goes without saying for everyone who's with us, but I just think the importance of getting really clear and having this be understandable language, particularly as we start talking about this with our community is just vitally important, I think, to being successful.
Yep, absolutely. And one of the other challenges with our current language is the inflationary language that we presented that had that cap on it. The state does not have a way of monitoring that and so the board every year is doing a reduction in the levy with that amount and so this would help us clean out that piece as well. So it would eliminate that $15 cap and an inflationary increase and under this proposal would not include an inflationary increase.
Other questions about operating referendum?
Is there a reason we're getting rid of the inflationary increase? Out of simplicity?
There are two factors. One, the, if the board is interested in doing the inflationary increase, I would suggest, and from MDE and kind of legal counsel after that bond went, or that referendum went to the vote, would be to either do it as an inflationary increase or not do it. With the inflationary increase with a cap, we don't get that calculated in for us from the state and so the accountability really is an internal accountability within the organization because we are the only district that phrased that question that way.
The administration of it was complicated.
The administration was and is and will continue to grow more complicated as years pass because that inflation that comes projected from the state increases off the base year on an annual inflationary base, not just one year to the next on an inflationary base. So, so to remove that cap in the language and either replace it with an inflationary increase or to leave it at a dollar amount would be more of a board's perspective on which of those two options would be better.
So what I'm asking the board for is permission to craft a very specific ballot, which we'll come back to the board on August 8th. It says 400 in the packet, but I would say the 400 to 450 range that maintains an overall dollar figure of $25 or less per month on a $200,000 Richfield home. That allows us to create an operational referendum question that would help ensure the long-term fiscal stability of our school district. It would be rescinding the $900 referendum and replacing it with this particular question of our taxpayers. There is no, the, the current risk if it was to lose, again, is we retain the current referendum and the current funding that we do have, which has been approved by our boards for another eight years. Are there other questions about? Or would you like to move, or should we do bond first and then move together?
I guess I was going to propose that we move the question on the operating referendum as presented, that we give authority to the superintendent and administration to develop ballot language looking at a range of 400 to 450 dollars per, per pupil.
An increase of 400 or 450?
An increase of 400 or 450 per pupil, that's correct.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Any further discussion?
Just a couple of things I want to mention, Madam Chair.
Please, go ahead.
So in, in the packet, we, we are talking about our reasons for making this request of our taxpayers and I think, I think we need to be clear that the, the onus for sort of adhering to and fulfilling those requests would rest with future boards and that, that's always going to be the case, but I think that's an important piece moving forward that, you know, future, future boards need to be keeping, keeping an eye on any commitments that we might be making to the taxpayers in terms of future to honor those commitments in the future.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Resolution?
Sorry.
Sorry.
This is a resolution, so we will pull the board. Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
Ms. Brockie?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the resolution passes.
Right, so that moves us to the second piece of the conversation, the sort of next step in our facility study, talking about a bond referendum and a special election, obviously at the same time. So we spent last year doing a capital facility study, we actually agreed some of our OSHA pieces today and some of the challenges we are working on. So what we've done is worked through with a group of staff, community members, representation from across the district to work as what we call the option creators, to sort of bring options forward to look at for what types of, of long-term facility maintenance, what types of attention do we need to have within our buildings. That occurred over a period of approximately six months, bringing us to today and there's sort of two pieces that split. One has to do with a referendum of our taxpayers, asking our taxpayers to support a bond to work on the long-term facility maintenance of our buildings. What we'd be doing in that is we'd be looking at investing in enhanced security and infrastructure improvements, looking at accessibility and security in each of our building, providing long-term maintenance, ensuring we have strong generator coverage at our high school and making sure that we have network coverage across our district. We'd be updating our agent facilities, you know, when we built these buildings back in the 60s, they built them very well. Most of them were built in the 50s and 60s, but really no major work has been done since the 1990s within our buildings. Buildings have a lot of unusable space, which we need to really work on converting to space for our students and space for 21st century learning. We need to look at improving all of our facilities across, looking at central learning center. We have received over a million in early childhood funding, looking at working on the central building to make sure that it's effective for that. Looking at our elementary buildings, looking at renovations and remodeling, improving access, creating a variety of learning spaces and providing equitable spaces across our district within all of our elementary schools. And then looking at our secondary, looking at renovations and remodels to enhance access and creating another variety of learning spaces and helping expand our STEM offerings throughout our entire program. Looking at some of the board vision around continuing our excellent stewardship of resources, not building a new building, but looking at the general building structure, that strong structure that was built in the first place, so we wouldn't be looking at teardown, we'd be looking at long-term renovation and support. It's important to note within that, that while we would be asking for 90 million in long-term maintenance, it's also important to note that 32 million is available to the board and we would also be utilizing those funds. Those are things, like were pointed out, in terms of carbon, carbon dioxide levels. Air maintenance and air handlers are things that are part of the board authority and are the things that we want to do to provide the most effective learning environment for our students. Also mentioned ceiling tiles and making sure that we have strong deferred maintenance in each of our buildings are also that area within the $30 million of board maintenance. Finally, really making sure that we have the funds within our building and our infrastructure to focus on our students and focus on our facilities. So we also had that group identifying some innovative instructional possible opportunities with college and career readiness skills and the opportunity to really accelerate our students into their future and making sure that we have those updates and improvements to address the changing needs of students as we continue to move forward. So with that, I'm asking the board to authorize, again, within that window of $25 or less between operating and capital, 25-year bonds going to the taxpayers, which would have an actual impact of about $12.50 on a $200,000 home, but then also being very clear with our taxpayers that we would also be authorizing an additional $4.83 for a total of capital facility of $17.33 on a $200,000 home. And that would be the first, again, bond referendum that we would have been taking within Richfield Public Schools since the 1990s. With that, and I have team here to support if there are questions, who have larger facility detail than myself, but we also have a detailed piece of information in the packet for us to look at.
I have one question and one comment. The question is kind of just to check for understanding for myself, that should voters not approve this bond referendum, we as a board still could make the decision to move forward with a 300 million?
32 million.
32 million.
Yeah. 30 million.
Oops. That was a really fast slip. That we as a board still have the agency to move forward with that even, even if the voters should choose to vote down what, the question before them. So I just want to check to make sure that that's accurate and again, I appreciate that we're being really transparent about the 30 million side of it and just want to be clear that we're also straightforward about the fact that we can choose to do that regardless of what the outcome is in November. So is that accurate, Craig, Steve?
Yes, those are absolutely long-term facility needs that we need to do.
Yep.
And that is within the board authority to make that decision. One of the things the board has talked very clearly about is wanting to be very transparent that that is part of the conversation, whether that's part of an ask or not.
Yep.
And that money can only go to very specific things, most of which are things we're required to do by the state, so it's air quality and things like that, it's not.
Things that were covered in the health and safety report earlier.
Right. Yep. Thank you for just affirming that and I think that I'm, I'm just glad to hear that the communication about how we share that is something that people are already thinking a lot about. And then the comment, again, this is not specific to the bond language or the ballot language, I'm just full of verbal typos, is how to really talk about what 21st learning spaces mean, because I think, you know, going back to the survey results that we got last month, I think people just have a lot of questions and I think can assume that, oh gosh, is that just sort of like frivolous fancy unnecessary things? And so I think being really specific about what that actually would look like and how it would contribute to the wellbeing of our students and community is going to be really important for us as we move forward.
Yeah, so that, that is very true. I mean, I think that my experience has always been that folks tend to view school as it was when they were students and for many in our community, that may have been 50 years ago. And so I think the task of educating the community on precisely what we're looking at and, you know, making that case that, you know, the sort of changes we've been talking about are not necessarily, I think we need to share the evidence base that sort of supports those structural changes. But we did, we certainly did hear from the community earlier this year in our study session that there's, there's a fairly clear interest in, you know, obviously we, we have a clear interest in being competitive district and I heard that message pretty clear.
Other questions? Alright, so while you're thinking, I'm just going to repeat it so that we have full clarity. So just as a reminder, we would be very clear in communicating in all communication materials, the $30 million of long-term facility maintenance that is within board authority, but we'd be asking you to approve, me working with our attorney to craft a valid question and call a special election to an approximate $90 million capital facility project that would have a, an impact of about $12.50 on an average home and with the board-approved dollars, that would be $17.33 on an average home.
I would just add, there was a lot of discussion at FPAC and in other, in CQC about one question versus two questions and things like that, so there was a lot of discussion that went into it. that went into it before, I think, the administration got to this point. And CQC was involved in talking about how to get that message out and how to make it as simple and clear as possible, so I feel like everybody is on the same page as, is on the same page and put a lot of effort into getting to this point.
I would move that we authorize the administration to work with the attorney to draft a ballot question and call a special election, authorizing up to 90-ish million dollars for facilities improvements.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Brockie, is there any further discussion?
Just one point of clarity, so when we do come forward with the ballot on August 8, that would be exact language, obviously, and exact dollar figures, and so whatever we locked in as numbers, again, even though they may include moving targets, we will lock in on an exact dollar figure, obviously, which would be appearing in the ballot. You all know that, but I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, I just, I'm, you know, I'm just giving you a little leeway if it's, you know.
I appreciate it, Mr. Paulus.
There's some pennies left over or something else.
Okay, so any further discussion? Okay, this is a resolution, so I will pull the board, Mr. Paulus.
Aye.
Ms. Brockie.
Aye.
Mr. Tensing.
Aye.
Ms. Cole.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, and the resolution passes. So, we will move on to 2718 school board meeting dates.
Alright, so just as a reminder, and a couple of these are changes, but you have your calendar in front of you, just a couple of pieces from a reminder perspective.
Let me tell you about a reminder. We not heard. You see these right here, these are what? For you looking, yeah, that's okay, girl. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take a recess for 10 minutes.
We call this meeting back to order, we will continue on with 2718 school board meeting dates.
So, just as a reminder, Tuesday, the 8th, we have our regular meeting held at the Richfield Municipal Building, we will be pulling a study session with the City Council from 6 to 7, and also, board discretion, we have added a meeting on Monday, August 21st, to make sure that we are able to get done with all the business that we need to. And then the third change, because most of these are on the typical dates, you'll also note a change in November, because we will be canvassing an election, so Monday, November 13th, moving that back one week to be after the election. So, that would cover the major changes, otherwise, once approved, these would go up on the district website. Are there any questions?
I just want to point out the meeting exceptions at the end of the list, does it note the August 8th, this is one of our exceptions.
So, we will add back to the notes there, prior to posting.
Do we need to make a motion on this, or is this?
Yeah, I will move the meeting dates with the correction as noted by Mr. Paulus.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. We will move on to organizational updates.
Alright, so we work with policy 301 and 302, position assignments and organizational charts, you are aware of all of these updates, it's a great time to remind, Richfield Public Schools is taking over our own community ed and early learning programs, so Carol McNaughton Commerce, Director of Community Ed, and Carol Putner, Director of Early Learning. It'd be important to remember that we were able to attract Director of Finance Jim Gilligan, who is joining our team from, most recently, in Anoka-Hennepin, and prior to that, he had been in Edina Public Schools. And then our schools leadership, of which we have a pretty significant transformation, I'm very proud to have four promotional opportunities for people who have significant history within Richfield Public Schools, starting at STEM with our Principal Amy Winter, who had been Assistant Principal at the middle school, Assistant Principal Melanie Lawrence Smith, who had been our Head of QCOM, we have Assistant Principal Ryan Finke, who was the Dean at the middle school, and then we also have Carrie Valla, Assistant Principal, who had previously been the Director of Math for Richfield Public Schools. Great opportunity to continue to build from within and add people to our management team as they continue to grow within their skills.
And this chart, is it located anywhere besides, you know, in our various packets? Is it somewhere on the website for easy access?
Maybe it's within the policy, but we could also post it under an administrative tag.
Yeah, it would be nice to have it somewhere just for quick, easy access for buildings and information.
We can absolutely do that.
Thanks.
Can you, can you please remind me where the ALC program is housed?
The ALC program is housed within Dr. Roby and the Assistant Superintendent, and so those responsibilities have spread across team members.
And, I'm sorry, Dean of Students at the middle school is not on this, is that correct?
No, Dean of Students are on teacher contract, I am proud to share, we hired Sharice Ayers, she'd been an administrative intern from St. Paul, very strong within their leadership pipeline, and we're very proud to attract this Ayers to become our Dean of Students at our middle school. Looking for a motion.
I will move the district org chart as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Paulus, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
So, 302 is a relatively redundant component for position assignments, basically the same thing, not 100% sure why we have it, but it is in non-visual form, basically the same kind of list, so policy 302, same information, written slightly differently.
I will move policy 302 as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Brockie, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. So, we will move on to board policy review.
Alright, so policy 203, organization of Board of Education, as you probably recall, we have actually gone through this policy not that long ago, as I'm looking, we did January 19th, 2016. There has been some conversation in regard to public comment, and as board members have shared, they wanted to have conversation and take a look at Section 5, and leave delegations and requests by groups and individuals to the board. Is there somebody who wants to share some background?
So, Crystal and I spoke, and we did a little bit of research, we looked at the MSBA policy, like they have their model policy, and it was quite a bit more extensive than ours, and was a lot more specific, and then I looked around at a couple of other district policies, and it seemed like we were kind of slightly out of line as far as being really specific and making, and making that opportunity really easy, so I think it really cleared. So, it's always, it's always available, it's always been available, but I think we just want to clarify the policy, and I think it's a good idea, we've talked about also that the MSBA model policies are a really great resource for us, so I think it is important when we look at any further policies for us to at least take a look at the MSBA policy and compare where we are to that, and I know we always look at statutes and make sure that we are in line with that, but I think MSBA puts a lot of work into those model policies, and I think they are, could be very useful for us. So, we were thinking we could send those out, or the MSBA policy and maybe a couple of other district policies for everyone to look at, and give feedback on how we might like to change the policy or update.
Absolutely, after our two board members had shared their perspective regarding Section 5, we did go back to MSBA policy, and we've done a lot of work looking at MSBA policy, it is significantly, there are significantly greater details within the public comment section of other schools. In our past history, that has not been, and I think we talked about it at the time, I think Mr. Paulus even, I think that it has not been a significant item, however, it has become more significant in the more recent past.
I think a couple of specific things that Christine and I have discussed would be, you know, as we revisit the policy, looking at things like having public comment at one of our two meetings a month, and that it would alternate with the meeting where we have our school presentations, that we could utilize Beth's role as Board Secretary in a more strategic way, and have people make requests to do public comment through Beth in the district office, as opposed to it going through the Chair, and having those requests be able to come in in person, over the phone, or over email, and, you know, having people be able to make those requests through a certain point in the day on Monday, and just being able, you know, as we look at this new set of policies, to be really clear about the steps for getting on the agenda to make public comments, and also the expectations, you know, those that Christine shared at the beginning of this meeting certainly will still apply, but I think that there are ways that we can organize it proactively that will be clearer and hopefully feel more welcoming to people that want to address us as a board.
So, that update will come in the next month's package?
Yes, so this is the first read, so with that guidance, I will go back and draft a new public comment section with additional information from MSBA, and create a second read for you all to go through and give feedback prior to, because I believe it'll have a pretty significant transformation prior to voting.
Yes.
Alright, so then, 620, credit for learning, you're gonna already note some changes, we wanted to go to the credit for learning as we're doing the high school transformation. It'd be important to note that the pretty significant change is in relation to transfers of students within, and previous, previously, we had a significant section regarding credit by assessment, if we walk through that, we would learn that that's actually not done in most schools, that's actually not done and hasn't been done in Richfield Public Schools, and so in looking at MSBA and our practices, that was functionally a policy that was not actually being enacted, and is not a typical policy. So, again, this is a first read, we're not asking for significant changes, we're just wanting to make sure that board members have an opportunity to take a look, take a look at the changes we're already going to propose within there, and then also if there are other changes to consider in that process.
In Section 4D, where we've got the 42 credit requirement crossed out, is that just a matter of updating that number, or are you gonna leave that number?
No, we're going to be updating that number, and so one of the reasons we were required to go back to this ideally before the start of the school year, and if you recall, I mentioned a couple of policies this was on in May, was to make sure that we had the updated number of creditcy in all of our policies also, so 42 will be changed.
So, the intention is to bring?
Oh, I think we actually were going to leave, I recall, we're gonna leave the number blank, because it expands over within the other policy, from 42 goes up by two each year because of seven-period day, and as credit requirements meets the expectations of MSBA, it doesn't create something conflicting that we would have to change numerically on a yearly basis.
Yeah, and I think that, correct, I don't think that, not specifying that number in policy, I don't think is a problem that can be in guidelines. And so, the expectation is that you guys will be making those modifications and bringing this back?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Alright, and then finally, 901, first read of that one, in regard to community education, and as you'll note, it's important for us to renew this because, obviously, we are moving community education within Richfield Public Schools, so we definitely wanted to do a full read of this policy, make a few changes, we did, again, some minor adjustments, but have it done, it'll need a little bit of fine-tuning, but not a significant overhaul prior to bring that back, and so that'll also come back for you in a couple of weeks.
Any other questions? Okay, so we can move on to copier managed print services.
Alright, so I'm glad to welcome the microphone, Anthony Patterness, Anthony is our Director of Technology, copiers are a form of technology, and Anthony has some positive news to share with us about the price of copiers.
Well, good evening, everyone. Copiers and printers are kind of an interesting business in our district that kind of technology inherited over time, in previous structures, it used to be housed under the Business Department, Business and Finance Department, and so we've had a partnership with Loffler and Metro Sales for well over five years, running our printer and copying service business, Loffler has about half of our photocopy machines, Metro Sales has about another half. Many of the leases that we had on those machines had expired or were coming up for expiration in a very soon timeframe, and so we took this opportunity to start to do a review of our entire printing environment. In the packet, you'll kind of notice the criteria that we looked at for determining how we wanted to move forward, we did do a print study in the fall, kind of looking at what our current environment looks like, and kind of identifying some areas of need or growth for our district as well. One of those areas that we identified was the amount of color printing that we were doing on color desktop printing machines, as opposed to multi-functional copy machines, which we can print at a significantly less cost on those machines. The other thing that we noticed is we didn't have a really good way of actually tracking true numbers and volumes across our district, all the printing that was coming off of computers when you sent a print job were being tracked with one system called a PCounter, and everything that was happening at a multi-functional copier were being tracked at the individual multi-functional copying machines. So, data was being housed in separate locations and not all compacted together, so we could actually get a true picture of what individuals were doing in our environment. So, we did have some software installed to kind of look at the whole environment and give us an assessment overall, that we use those numbers to then present to a variety of vendors to put together a package proposal on what the estimated value of our printing services would be. One of the end goals that we wanted to get to is instead of having two vendors servicing machines across our district to consolidate down to one vendor to manage all our print services and copier needs. We have had, again, as I said, a good relationship with Loffler and Metro Sales, so we reached out to both of them to look at a complete package to present to us. We also looked at Advanced Imaging Solutions, which many school districts also have used. We had a criteria that they had to work off of the state contract or a national joint powers agreement contract as well. State contracts offers very competitive pricing, but also has some very strict guidelines when it comes to printing services on what they have to actually include, how they remove equipment, how they dispose equipment, and how they actually work with the customer in the end for some accountability mechanisms, which is good for our environment as well. The numbers are all presented there on what we would get with Loffler, Metro, and Advanced Imaging Solutions, and based off of the prices that came in and the complete proposals, the IT department, along with myself, are recommending that we move forward with Loffler Company to take over our complete managed services and printing services. What this would entail is they would come in and they would actually replace all of our printing, most of our printing equipment, we have a photocopier, multi-functional machine at RDLS, and one in our district print center that actually have about another six months to a year on their lease with Loffler. At that time, Loffler would work those machines and those environments into the rest of the environment that we would move forward with, if we choose to move forward with Loffler. You'll notice on some of the caveats, the price totals that are in there are based on having colored desktop printers still, so there are some additional cost savings that would come in, because the plan is to remove all the colored desktop printers and force all color print jobs to go to a multi-functional copier, which, again, is significantly less per page to print on a multi-functional than it is on a desktop printer, and Loffler came in with very competitive pricing on both black and white cost per page, as well as color per page compared to their competitors. We'd be looking at an annual savings of roughly $74,000 annually on our printing environment moving forward with this proposal.
Anthony, in the lead into this, you now made mention of buyout of existing contract places, is that included in the budget?
Yep, so Loffler and Metro Sales included buyouts at no cost to the district, they picked that up with their companies, AIS, included buyout in their pricing.
Cool, thanks.
Other questions? So, tonight, I'm just asking for approval to move forward with Loffler to take over all our managed print services and our multi-functional copiers.
I'll move approval of the contract as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Tensing, any further discussion?
Can I ask clarification, the city contract is presented, you meant with Loffler as recommended?
Correct, to take over the, via the state contract, I believe is the language.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. So, we will move on to the TIF resolution for Lyndale Gardens.
Alright, so as a reminder, we had City Manager Steve Devich here presenting two of them, they are resolutions, and so we're talking about TIF relation to Lyndale Gardens, and they requested that we supported the opportunity to extend, this is one of two of those requests, and so I'll put that before you for resolution today.
I'll move the resolution on Lyndale Gardens as presented.
A second. We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Brockie, this is a resolution, so I will pull the board, Mr. Paulus.
Aye.
Ms. Brockie.
Aye.
Mr. Tensing.
Aye.
Ms. Cole.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, and the resolution is passed. We will move on to the TIF resolution for- We will move on to the TIP resolution for Cedar Avenue.
All right, so similarly, Cedar Avenue, TIP District, again, just to extend to support work that did not get started, and just started to allow that extension, again, City Manager Devich came and explained the information to us tonight, and so I put before you the resolution to extend TIP on Cedar Avenue. Cedar Point comes?
I will move the resolution as presented. I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus, this is a resolution, so I will pull the board again. Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
Ms. Brockie?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the resolution passes. We will move on to Hennepin County School Recycling Grants.
All right, and so Hennepin County School Recycling Grant, I'd like to introduce Dan Pretzinger, Director of Buildings and Grounds, and one of the leaders in our operations team, so Mr. Pretzinger.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members, appreciate your time tonight. On February 21st, 2017, the school board authorized the Facilities Department to apply for a Hennepin County Recycling Grant, which would award up to $50,000 to enhance and expand recycling and organics programs. The district would need to contribute 25% match of the total, or $12,500. This grant would allow us to purchase items listed in your board packet. Hennepin County has approved this grant opportunity with Richfield Public Schools. They have asked the school board for a resolution, as indicated in the agenda item, to move forward with this project. Do you have any questions?
I remember when we granted the authority to the law, we covered it all, and I believe it was potentially sold as a potential to get lots of free money to do recycling, which is a nice thing to do.
And great that we were selected to move forward.
Yeah, definitely.
I'll move the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Cole, and another resolution, so I will pull the board. Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
Ms. Brockie?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so the resolution passes. We will move on to district access control purchase.
All right, and so with this, we're back to, huh, Dan and Anthony, it looks like.
It is. At our last board meeting on January 12th, the school board approved our long-term facilities maintenance revenue budget for this fiscal year. One of those projects that was included in the LTFM budget was to install a replacement access control system. One of my goals since I started here at Richfield Schools was to better secure buildings during school hours and after school hours. This process would also help us by requiring our staff to wear their IDs and credentials so they could get into the buildings. The plan that we are providing is the first phase of a multi-year, an ongoing project to provide better security for our students, our staff, and our community. Upon approval of the referendum, additional security steps would be taken such as interior door access control, secured vestibule entries, integrated video surveillance, integrated visitor management, district-wide rekeying of the buildings, and improved lighting. Over the past several months, I have partnered with Director Paternas and the Technology Department to review several different access control systems. We reviewed Vigilon, Brivo OnAir, Lanell, Genetek, and Open Options. We found that the most, we found that most of the systems' capabilities were very similar. We had specific criteria that we were looking for. One of those is ease of usage, we wanted to make sure it was kind of an Apple-type friendly system for our users, and then are the terms easy to understand on the system? How many mouse clicks does it take to get the job done? Also, friendly integration between card access and video surveillance system was a must. Capabilities for visitor management system, badging and tracking of visitors as they enter the building, a web-based system access, so we could access that from anywhere in the district or outside the district at any time. System expandability, additional card readers, Wi-Fi for interior doors, door hardware and visitor management, and additional cameras. Local manufacturers, customer service and support was a, we felt was a need, vendor representation and support, and also pricing. We narrowed down the manufacturers to three companies, Vigilon, Lanell, and Genetek. We found that Vigilon best met the criteria that we were looking for. In reviewing the pricing, the three companies were similar priced. They all had an average install cost of about $4,000 per door, depending upon specific options. I had the companies break down their quote by project. Each project is one school. Also, they separated each project by finance code, such as door hardware, electronic control, or electronic door control, and electrical. You may notice that the work scope varied slightly between quotes due to door and equipment changes that we changed between the quotes. Also, as an example, Genetek quote didn't include the request to exit devices or door contact wiring at Central, which we requested, but they didn't remember to put in their quote. All the companies, other than Vigilon, had some type of an annual reoccurring maintenance cost. So, all of that said, we're asking for your approval tonight to move forward with Vigilon and Protection 1. Do you have any questions for us?
So just to put this in perspective, this is a step towards changing some of our locks towards card key access, which provides greater security, which also ensures that staff are wearing identification and their ID badges, and this is something we would definitely be looking to expand upon if we were to pass the bond referendum.
The ID badges actually expand into the copiers, because new copy machines now do keycard badge release, so instead of typing a PIN code...
I love those. He's a clown.
Can you send him to a specific, like any printer that you're badging?
He's a clown, he's a clown, right?
I'll let you answer that.
But in terms of this, when we really looked at this, you know, the exciting piece for me, because I get on the tech side and geek out, when we put that infrastructure project in three years ago, we put it in mind with expandability of future security and video cameras. So we've got the data closets in the backend infrastructure that are ready to support our expansion. The piece that was a good partner with Dan and his knowledge and expertise around other security vendors and products that they've used is trying to find the right fit and product for us. So looking at our technical environment and being able to find a tool that we can do in phases, so we could put it in now and has expandability and integration, as he said, with video surveillance in the future, so everything is housed within one security package.
So how does it work? What kind of a downtime procedure do you have, something like that, so if you lose power, what happens?
So uniquely, if we lose power, the high school is the main hub, so what we may lose in terms of when we expand to the video cameras, if there isn't a generator at the high school, is the ability to jump in and access video in real time. The video is still recording within buildings, because each building will still have its own little server and hub, so in terms of video recording, those will still take place in buildings that still have power, as well as the keycard access will still function, it won't get any updates to new employees. So if HR puts in a new employee and the power is out, the new employee won't get the access in the building, because it can't get to the building, but it does have a memory localized at each building, so keycard access will still remain operational.
And card access will continue to work, because it does have a battery backup system within it, until those batteries die, every, well, once those batteries die, I think they last, you know, 10 hours, 10, 12 hours, then they would go to a default lock.
Is there a total across the six buildings?
There is.
You couldn't find it in those 100 pages?
I don't.
Sorry.
The details lie.
So Protection 1 was $124,995.
I do appreciate this effort, I feel like, again, one of the things that came through in the survey results that we got last month was a real value of safety for our young people and for our staff, and so I think that this is important, and I appreciate you doing this work.
So was the $124,000, is that the lowest, or are they all all part of it?
So I can go through them quick for you. Protech was $144,945, and then GSSC, which is our current provider, was $112,932.13.
So for the roughly $12,000 we built in service, and Mormons and everything else were totally worth it?
Well, it was that, and GSSC didn't include several pieces that we had asked for in that bid, so.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
And the other piece, talking about looking at this, this is a total of several individual projects that they'll be working on, and then on the analysis, again, to reemphasize Dan's statement earlier, on the several different security products we looked at, there's initial cost, and then there's total cost of ownership. So some of these come with hardware base, some of them are software based, where we provide servers, some of them come with annual subscription fees, where you need to update your software on an annual basis. So there's several hidden costs in some of the products that you may not see initially, but turn into an overtime cost as well, which is why Vigilon came out ahead when you look at the total cost of ownership.
So you're asking for approval of the purchase using Protection 1 EBT?
Correct.
I will move the purchase using Protection 1 EBT.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Brockie, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the motion passes. We have no donations this month, so we will move on to advanced planning and legislative update.
Legislative-wise, and I'm going to foreshadow for our next meeting, ESSA has had sort of its first report, it just came out, and so it's too early for me to send that back out to the board. I will send it on this week, but I'll be able to report and have conversation around that on August 8.
And there will be the public comment period for the plan that the Department of Education submits, or, excuse me, the draft plan that the Department of Education shares with the public is then required to be open and available for public comment for a month before it is finalized and ultimately submitted onto the Federal Department of Education. So we can talk a little bit more about how people can access that public comment if they are so moved, because that, I believe, will be live during our August meeting. Sorry, just thought I'd jump in with that.
That's great. That's it? Okay, so we'll move on to information and questions from the board. Already included in our packet was that the new teacher breakfast will be on August 22nd from 8:00 to 8:30 in the district office boardroom, and then also we will have an all-staff breakfast and welcome at 7:30 on Tuesday, August 29th, followed by the all-staff welcome from 8:00 until 10:30. I would also add that in the closed session in our June meeting, we discussed the superintendent performance evaluation, and basically discussed the fact that I would be sending out all of the forms to everybody, and I was expecting everything to come back, and then Superintendent Anoski would provide his own self-review, along with the summaries that he's done throughout the year. So all of that went out, and I'm still collating information.
I have a couple brief things to share. One, I think I'll probably speak for everybody, but correct me if this isn't true, we got the staff survey results and the community survey results, and so have all, I expect, looked through that and read all of the comments that were shared with us, so thank you to Mr. Paternas for providing us with all of that data. I appreciate everybody who did comment and everybody who did take the survey, and I think all of us are committed to responding and thinking about how to really address issues that were raised in those surveys. And so I don't know if we are going to discuss some of that in an upcoming meeting, but I did just want to make sure that people who are here or who might be watching this know that we have received your feedback and your words and take it very seriously. The second thing, I guess, is more of a question than it was prompted, actually, while I was looking at the community education policy, and thinking about how we have the opportunity to create our own community education council now that we are, you know, going it alone as Richfield Community Education, and I know John, who's not here, is our board liaison to that committee, but it prompted for me a bigger question, which is, what openings are available on all of our district-wide committees for the 2017, 2018 school year, and how we might be able to communicate what some of those opportunities could be to families and to community members who might want to get involved? You know, one of the things we talked about in our study session earlier tonight was that, you know, several of us on the board were participating in district committees before we ultimately ran for the board, and it is a really wonderful and, I would say, highly impactful way to get involved in the district. So I think information about that, and how we can share that publicly would be great. And then the third thing is just, it's a short, but it was a text, I guess, that meant a lot to me. So my brother is working on a team right now at the United Nations, and he sent me a text over the weekend saying that a lawyer that is on his delegation for this project at the UN is a Richfield Schools alum, and I just thought that was very cool, and it made me think about how much more I think we could be doing to really share some of the good work in the world that our graduates and alums are going on to do, and just thinking, you know, I never would have known about that had my brother not happened to be working with this person, and so I wanted to share that, and just, I'll continue to think about how we might be able to highlight some of our graduates in the future.
I like that. Anyone else? We will move on to future meeting dates. Our next meeting is on August 8th, which is a Tuesday, a change from the routine. It will be preceded at 6:00 PM by a study session with, between Richfield Public Schools and the City Council, and then a 7:00 PM regular board meeting. This will take place in the Bartholomew Room in the Richfield Municipal Building, so it's also a change of venue. And then September 5th, the day of...
Just as a reminder, August 21st, we just approved tonight, so that wasn't in there, just reminding you, so that will be added on into our next future meeting day agenda, I'm not sure we did it, we had that tonight.
And then followed by our September 5th, 2017, meeting, which is on a Tuesday following Labor Day, and that will be a regular board meeting followed by a closed session. Are there any suggested future agenda items? We do not have a closed session scheduled this evening.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Tensing, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, we are adjourned.